I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That was so hard to say her name right.
Wow.
Nice.
Mayor Ferlong still here?
Yep. Old one out of the old bag of tricks there. All right, thank you. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda tonight. Item A, June 6, 2023 workshop minutes. Item B, June 6, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $1,910,591.37. Item D, HRA claims of $334,195.88. Item E, resolution approving a PUD amendment for the Lilly redevelopment project. Item F, resolution approving an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Item G, development agreement between the city of North St. Paul and then NSP 2515 LLC. Item H, lease agreement between the city of North St. Paul and the Kokro volleyball LLC. Item I, ordinance amending the North St. Paul city code as it relates to parking restrictions in the business district. Item J, League of Minnesota Cities waiver for the Economic Development Authority liability insurance. Item K, building permit report for May of 2023. Item L, resolution accepting donations, May of 2023. Item M, approve the tobacco license. And item N, liquor license renewal for 2024.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody want to pull? Any items?
I would like to pull item E.
Item E. Anything else?
E will become D.
Are we good to move on? All right. That motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
So move.
Second.
Senator Cole, second. Councilmember Schwer. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next part is we're going to have open to the public. Carrie will be keeping track. We have three-minute time limit. She will give me a motion for one minute left, so I can, we can keep everybody moving. We have a list here tonight, so I will... Joe Stallman? Name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you, Joe Stallman, 2205 15th Avenue. Thank you for having me here today. I would like to stand here in support of Triple Crown Batting Cage in its current configuration and business model. I see the batting cage as a great asset to the community. I feel really good about all of the things that are happening up at McKnight Fields. And I think that just driving off of Highway 36 and seeing that sports complex and all the action that's happening there is a good thing. I think we should keep it going. I do not, I've not seen the owner's books. I don't know what they look like. I don't know if he's making a lot of money or barely scrap by, but I hope you have before we make the decision today. It would be terrible if we changed the business model and then had the, had the building go vacant. Couldn't find someone to fill that position, to keep that business going. That would be my biggest fear, and I hope you will consider continuing your agreement as it has been for the last 30 years.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. TJ, please. Welcome. Name and address, please.
TJ Hawthorne, 2618 Second Avenue East. Just to add what Joe said, everything, that place has been a staple in my life, growing up. And what I don't see is the logic, the logical conclusion, like you said, if it becomes empty. Where, right now, there's a, not zero tax, and if we're looking to add more tax, where, where, why, for one? What is the, we have this here now, and we need to take this amount away from it every year because our city is lacking funds? Is that what we're looking for? I don't understand where this place has been a staple in this community for 30 years. And the net positive that that place generates, not just the athletes that have come out of this town, but the wellness of our community. So I'm glad Joe got to say the things first, because he says it perfectly, and I just really second exactly what Joe said as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you.
Eric?
Good evening. Thanks for listening to me today. So Eric Bartholomew. Yes, absolute direct look, relation to Dennis Bartholomew, the owner of Triple Crown Batting Cages. Address 16144, I'm in Inverness Way, that's in Lakeville. I grew up in North St. Paul, went to high school here, and for many years after that, lived here as well, too. So a couple of things that I just wanted to say. You know, for one, of course, I'm coming to this as a son, and knowing for the last 30 years, the sacrifice. And of course, like any business owner, they all sacrifice, you know, when they, when they decide to open up a business. But certainly, my dad is no exception. And what he has meant to this community, how much he cares about this community, the decision that he made years and years ago to open up a batting cage while, you know, it was a side business, something to start doing. And what it became after that has been nothing short of, I can't tell you how many lessons I've learned as a youth, and then growing up, and now as an adult, and as a father, what that took. And at the same time, everything that it's meant to the community, you listen to TJ, you heard Joe, and of course, the thousands, thousands of others that would reiterate the same thing. The tireless hours that he spent down there to create what it is today, the work that he's done with the local food shelf here, thousands of pounds, giving out free rounds of hitting because of that, you know, the offer that they give to customers, and what those things, what, what that provides to, you know, baseball, softball players, and all the growth and opportunity that I know I have had on the baseball field. Giving one-on-one instructions, as well as to teams, the eyes that light up when kids, when things click, and what that becomes. Those are all the, I mean, one, a few of the many experiences that I've had working there, growing up there, being around there, it was my second home, basically. I was 14 years old, and I'm almost 43, so the amount of years that it's been around, and the influence that it's had on this community and myself, and everybody around me, including my friends as well, too, has been enormous. I guess the last thing I would say is just, you know, there aren't a lot of batting cages for, I know, perhaps a niche that a batting cage is, there isn't, there aren't a lot around. There have been a lot that have tried, that have come and gone and disappeared, and for a lot of reasons, just because of what has been proposed all of a sudden after 30 years. It's tough. It's a tough business. There's a few months that might do really well, and come back in December, you know, we're in Minnesota, and it's a hockey state. A lot of other players, a lot of other sports, of course, take rain. And so a baseball softball facility is needed by many, there just aren't a lot. People from all over Wisconsin, there's been people from Duluth that have come down. It's a destinational place, and there's nowhere else to go. And so my father provided that. He's provided it for a long time, and I hope that that continues to be something that is provided.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Jay, and I can't read the last name, sorry. No, I see you now. Name and address, please.
My name is Jay Tashney. I'm speaking on behalf of my two, tenure at, at the Transfiguration Catholic Church. The address is escaping me. But, you know, in my 12 years of working as a youth pastor in the North St. Paul Oakdale community, I can't necessarily speak to the financial importance of, of having a facility like this, but I can speak to the social aspects. When you're counseling kids on, on specifically batting, you know, if you, if you can hit, we'll find a place for you on the team. And there are so many young people today that are looking for a place on the team. They're looking for a place to belong. And I think the world, I think gangs, I think, you know, situations are offered to kids, and if we don't provide and subsidize an opportunity like a Triple Crown Batting Cage, where kids can openly explore their weaknesses and improve those weaknesses, you know, I think we would be at a great loss if we, if we lose an opportunity to minister to kids in that way. You know, as a business owner, obviously, I do roofing. You know, we were able to improve the facility and, and create a very attractive and outward appearance, make it look better. And, you know, to, to shut that down at this point in time, to make it not affordable for people, I think would be a travesty. And I, I just am speaking in support of the Triple Crown Batting Cages for the purpose of having kids have a place to belong. Jamie Ogden couldn't be with us tonight, and from the Minnesota Twins, he's obviously had a Twins game. And he wrote a statement as well, and he was very adamant, kind of shared some of the same pieces of his struggle to try to have a place on the team and a place to belong. And he was able to, through Triple Crown, that's really where he developed his craft of batting, and literally took it beyond making the JV, the varsity, the college, and then eventually the Minnesota Twins. And, you know, so having a kid from our community that was able to, to have that, I think I hold that out as a, an example for you in making this decision. So God bless your decision.
Thank you. Christine? Name and address, please.
Christine Adi, 2528 15th Avenue East, North St. Paul, not too far from the batting cages. Do have two sons, one's almost 30 and one is 24. Baseball really wasn't their thing. We probably went there about a handful of times, but we have kids playing for the Twins. We have kids from our community, like the Vannard Boys, who I'm pretty sure spent some time over there at, at Triple Crown. And for you guys to come in and, after the deal that you've had with him for 30 years and be like, we need more money from you, that's probably kind of a slap in the face, kind of, for this gentleman. We've had other things in the past that, all of a sudden, we don't have lifeguards at Silver Lake anymore. That's, that's, you know, it's been a little while, but, you know, this is a place where kids can go, and they can hit some balls, they can, you know, they can relieve some stress. It's a better place to go. We've got other youth in our community who are not making good choices. I mean, I'm sure you all are aware of what happened just on McKnight last night. Don't know if those young men were from this area or not, but hopefully, we can continue to have a place that's economical for people in our community to go and have their children learn some baseball skills. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassidy? Did I got that right?
Casey.
Casey, sorry. My bad. Hi, welcome. Name and address, please.
Yep, Casey Carlson, 9897 Starlight, that's in Woodbury. I'm speaking in support of the batting cage in three different areas. So first of all, I am the commissioner of the 3M Softball League that plays out here on Thursday nights. We moved out here after they closed Tartan Park in 2016, and we did it extensively because there's a batting cage here where we can all take batting practice before we go and pull muscles and things like that. So we, we really like it, and we can't tell you enough how, how much we, we really enjoy that. I also speak to you as a youth baseball coach. So I've coached baseball for 15 years, and one of the things that Bart does at the batting cage that goes unappreciated is that you can rent out the batting cage for $50 an hour for the entire team. And so we've done that, we've brought, and we've brought lots of kids over here from Woodbury to be able to take batting practice and things like that, because we're competing against a lot of these club teams, and these club teams cost a lot of money, and a lot of people can't afford it. Most of the kids that I coach, they're not kids that can afford a lot of money to be able to do this, and so that's been very affordable. One thing, too, as the 3M softball coach, that I want to stress here is that we bring money to the community. The VFW is a sponsor of one of our teams. Newman's and the VFW get a lot of business after our games, and so take that for what it's worth. The other thing, and then I'll, I'll let you go, but I encourage you to go look at the batting cage. Go inside. It's not something that is opulent, and, I mean, he's using nets that he used for 30 years. Some of those balls are older than me, and I'm 54 years old. So he, he's raised the price of the batting cage three times in 30 years. And each time, when I'd come in, he's like, Casey, I need to raise the price. I'm really sorry about this. And it, it's just marginal, but he, he really speaks to the common man when he's pricing this stuff out. So I encourage you to, just go take a look and ask, is this a place where it's, it's generating a lot of money? There's a batting cage down in Burnsville, and if you go look at that, it's a lot different. It's very upscale. It also costs a lot more money. It's, it's a whole different thing. Bart is doing this for the common man, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bob, please.
Bob Mosner, 2886 Margaret. I've known Bartie for, I don't know, 40 years now, 50 maybe. I'm still playing ball, and when I go to his cage to tune up, or before we're going to a tournament down in Florida or something, you know, it's nice to be able to go somewhere where you can get some swings that's reasonable. Like these high-tech cagers that you're talking about, geez, they're expensive as heck, you know, it's pricey out of it. Bartie's place is reasonable. It's cheap. He's not making a killing there, you know. I think you guys need to look at his books and see, you know, he's not, and the only time it's really busy is early in the year, when the snow is still on the ground, before the teams want to get out in the spring. The rest of the time, you can get in, there's, you know, no waiting. So it's, I think you guys need to look at that. It's a heck of a, heck of a price increase there, from nothing to 2,100 a month. It's a big jump, especially for the guy that built the buildings, that and the concession stands, and donate it to you. That, I think he deserves a break. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Bob. John Schmal. That last name I can say. That's why.
I'm in favor. I don't know. The other people. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. Neighbor, I had daughter's graduation party in the Casey Lake Pavilion Saturday. Told me that when they got there, the key code wouldn't work, and had to wait 45 minutes for someone to show up to open the door, and when they finally did, they had to be warned to get some Gorilla Tape to tape the panic bar down on one of the doors, because if people went out, they wouldn't get back in. So I don't know how that works, but I got to believe what he said, though, anyway. So maybe you want to look into what the code problem is. The next item is they've changed the documents that come with notification by email of these meetings, and neither, first of all, you get the email message or the indication you have the message, then you go in and you open the email message, there's no time on that document. So what's the deal? Can't you just put down 5:30 when it's the workshop, or 6:30 when it's the council meeting? I took this up with Carrie last meeting, because I says, I'm going to try a different way of doing it. I won't bring it up to you. I'll talk to her. I don't know what, she explained something, and I couldn't understand what it was. But again, you have to go in, open your email from the city, and no time. Then there's another document, when you hit agenda, that comes up, a brand-new type of document, that's only been around a couple of months. No time. And this particular time with the workshop, I decided, well, I know when the workshop is. It's at 5:30. Just yesterday, I went, I better check. No, it's not at 5:30. It's at 5:00 this time around. So, you know, what can you do? ADA requirements for new developments. I found out from the former chair of the planning commission that she was able to bring up the fact that there needed to be two more ADA spots in the new development, the Lilly Building, because there had to be two per floor. So lots of things happened when that came up, but there's nothing in the, the rules of the game that says PC rules on ADA developments, or what is required. So I don't know where the ADA police are, but I guess it's just that people speak up and say, you're missing the ADA requirements, like Elaine did. And in the case of the change that was required, Brandy had to explain to me the floor, the floor plan of the new development. I couldn't figure it out, how it was done, and she was able to explain to it, they work live units have stairs into them. How can you have work, a workspace that doesn't have an entrance that has, that are, does have stairs? You can't do that. It can't be done. But evidently, that's the way it turns out. And the last, there was a question from the council that said to Brandy as to what happens if there's no work in live-work units? And Brandy said, no problem, it's a dwelling unit, it's just more dwelling units. The, again, last, the former chair of the PC board said, and she appeared at a meeting that you had on Saturday morning to impress upon the fact that in the MU district of the city downtown area, you have to have two uses. If the work units go away, it's in violation, but there's no police that'll ever bring the city to court on that subject. Thank you.
All right. That will close the, open to the public? Sorry. Oh, anyone online? Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll close public hearing. Go to city business.
Thank you, Mayor. First up on the city business action items and recommendations is resolution to authorize participation in the Ramsey County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. We have Brandy Howe here, Community Development Director, to discuss this.
This item was actually discussed at the previous two city council meetings. The first was in May, or actually, I think it was in April, I'm sorry, as a workshops session, and we had Ramsey County Commissioner Victoria Reinhardt here to speak on behalf of it, as well as Carrie Collins, the Community Development Director of Ramsey County. And at the last meeting on June 6, I provided a presentation to give a better overview, not a better overview, but an overview from our perspective, from North St. Paul's perspective, on how this program, the levy, may benefit or not benefit the city of North St. Paul. And at that time, city council had asked for some additional time to consider the ramifications of participation in this. So at this time, staff is looking for your direction on whether or not to participate. Carrie Collins is here today to answer any additional questions you might have, but I'll just open it up to you at this point.
Any questions on that item? Anybody want to bring up the motion to vote on? What's the?
Is there a motion? There's supposed to be a motion.
Yep. So the, want to read the motion again? Then we'll vote on it. Authority to participate in the Ramsey County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So that's the vote, to participate in. Any, no questions?
Just for, just for clarity purposes, a yes vote would mean we would like to opt into the Ramsey County. A nay vote would mean we would like to sustain at this time.
That's my, is that what, that correct? So yes is we're joining the HRA Ramsey County. No is we're keeping her out. Correct? All right. So I want to call. Can I have a motion for the vote?
So moved, Your Honor.
Oh.
Second.
Something else. All those in, Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Cole. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, what do you mean? I thought that's for, I'm sorry, I missed it, I mis-said that. I thought it was to, I'm sorry. I am a nay.
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 I thought it was a call for the vote. I apologize.
So the motion fails.
Thank you very much. Next one?
All right. Next up is the lease agreement between the city of North St. Paul and Triple Crown Batting Cages LLC. Just to read the background facts on this, the city of North St. Paul is the owner of the recreational property and building with the common address of 2308 10th Avenue East. The property is located on the City of McKnight Field Recreation Complex, which consists of multiple batting and softball fields and other related building structures and appurtenances. The city recognizes that the owner, Dennis Bartholomew, from Triple Crown Batting Cages, has built it at his own expense, the building in, at 2308 10th Avenue East, and donated it to the city after a 15-year agreement, or lease. All obligations under this initial agreement and donations of the building have been fulfilled by all parties. The current lease will terminate on June 30, 2023. The proposed agreement would have Triple Crown Batting Cages LLC paying the city for use of the building and property at a base rent of $3.50 per square foot, with a total of 7,200 square feet, for a total of $25,200 per contract year, and equal monthly installments of $2,100 a month. The proposed agreement will commence July 1, 2023, and continue through June 30, 2024, and could continue for a maximum of five contract years if the contract is not canceled.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, I think Brian did a good job of touching on all the points on why the contract was put into place, because the current one is coming to an end. The terms that were, are in here and reflected, it is my understanding that that's with staff, and I believe your negotiation with, with Mr. Bartholomew. The agreement itself is rather straightforward. It's a simple lease. I know that there are questions about why are we charging rent now? My understanding is there was direction that the previous agreements had been satisfied and that the city was interested in collecting some rent, just in fairness, out of the idea that you are giving up public space and you should generate some revenue on that. So that was the negotiated price, was my understanding. I had a conversation with Brian and Mr. Bartholomew last week. I was not aware of any of these issues. My understanding is the sole issue that remains is the actual contract amount, which is currently based on $3.50 a square foot for 7,200 square feet, coming in at $2,100 a month or $25,200 a year. So I believe that's the issue that has caused some additional discussion. Other than that, the contract is before you. I do think we need to come to some sort of resolution, given the contract term ends at the end of this month. So I would encourage us to try and figure out how to work through it tonight. I believe Mr. Bartholomew's here, so if we want to try and figure it out, that's great. Otherwise, the contract's before you for your consideration.
Does anybody, I'll start off, I guess, because I was at the negotiations. I know in North St. Paul, we've been, we went through an audit as far as where we're at with all of our different assets and different things with the city. It's a, it's a for-profit business on city land. The 15 years was negotiated when the building was there. The term was met. There was an extra, an extra 15 years to go up to 30 years as far as that. But it's a, we talked about it. I called around for different square footages to figure out. Five was a, dollars a square foot was a good price, $4, or $5 was a fair price, $4 a square foot was a good price, and $3 a square foot for that kind of a facility was an excellent price. So we negotiated, I think it was the end of April, walked away. And first I heard about any kind of issues was last week when Brian reached out to me and I was actually on job sites, so I couldn't meet last week. And so I was very surprised that this came up again because I thought we went through everything with that being a for-profit. We talked about for-profit and not-for-profit, but being on the city land as far as being other scenarios, paying rent, with course, the building being there was the 15 years worth of rent. So that was completely acceptable. And then it went another 15 years and that money will go towards the parks and other things we have as well. So, and then being on the public land is where we discussed. Anything I missed? As far as that with our negotiations?
That was a period of coverage of it, yes. Yep. I agree.
So, does any council member, after reading, have any input?
I appreciate all of you coming out here and giving us your thoughts on the building. I happen to agree with most of you. That is a wonderful facility. I remember when I was a youth, I've placed, I've swung bats there and enjoyed it and thank him for having it. As a City Council member, though, to protect the assets of the city, to, to give a city-owned property for free to a for-profit business, unfortunately, I believe, opens us up to too much liability for discrimination and favoritism claims. I want to see the business succeed. I want to see it stay. But I don't believe the current free model, unfortunately, is viable to protect the assets of the city.
Thank you. Any other council members that'd say anything?
I'll go ahead. Yeah, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. And much like Councilmember Norby, I totally agree, youth need somewhere to go. Absolutely. And Mr. Bartholomew has run a business here for 30 years. And successfully, it seems to be. You all are here for a reason. And also, in the same vein, I think when we talk about the duration of the agreement that's been there, an additional 15 years of rent-free, I think, I think we've made a good trade there. And so I think $2,100 a month may be feasible. I think that's a feasible ask. And again, my understanding is it was negotiated. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwal.
Yeah. Thank you again for everyone that came out this evening to support Mr. Bartholomew. Excuse me. I too believe that this is a great asset to the city as well as to the youth in the surrounding area. And I'm grateful to hear that some of the older generations are utilizing it as well. I am also in agreement with the council members here, the 15 years and additional 10 on top of that. At rent-free is, I feel very generous. However, I also am in the mindset of, I would like to discuss more, not tonight, in regards to what that contract looks like. Because as we saw that contract and that number, again, we understand that we agreed to it and that it was agreed amongst council and, or not, excuse me, council, but the negotiation was there with Mayor and City Manager Frandl and Bartholomew. However, I would like to see, I would like to talk about more at another time.
Councilmember Cole, any input?
Spending the last 27 years in North St. Paul, my boys have swung a lot of bats over there.
Me, too.
And it's, it is truly an asset. There truly is a need for something for youth to do in the city. Taking a look at the batting cages versus the parks versus some of the other things, we recognize that profits aren't made in a park in a city, that the city invests money into a park to do additional things for the community. I do view this as a 15-year agreement that was fulfilled, an additional 15 years that was provided at no cost. And at this point in time, it is a for-profit company and the city does have liabilities that need to be addressed. I too was of the assumption that the, both, both parties were in agreeance, agreement at the $3.50. So I'm actually disappointed that we've come to this position where we are tonight. The support that you have, you've got a supporter on this side of the desk, too. But it's disappointing that it's come to this. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know how I'm gonna vote. What I have to vote on is yes for $3.50 a square or no. If we vote yes at $3.50 a square foot, that leaves the decision to run a business, in my opinion, up to you. And we've got legal guidance here that can help clarify where I stand and correct me. If we vote no, your lease expires in 10 days.
So the action is to, yay for approval for the attached management services agreement for the municipal recreation facility.
Can I interrupt one thing, Brian?
Sure.
You told me I had a chance to speak at this council meeting.
Please, come on. Please.
Nobody's inviting me to speak. Why is that?
You are certainly welcome to speak.
Can I answer that? Sit back and listen to this. I think you know who I am, Dennis Bartholomew. I can give you two addresses. My wife isn't sure which one I live at on that. But go back to the beginning of this thing. You gotta get a remortgage his house to take a gamble. Because I knew at that time, when you build these batting cages, you aren't going to be able to pay rent on something like that. That's why there's nothing left in the Twin City area. Okay? We've become a destination for all these people to come into this town and spend money here. And we go back to the 15-year lease. Let me explain that. When I first approached the city, and you're talking people that, at that time, Bill Sandberg was the mayor, Betty McCollum, US Congresswoman. Chuck Wiegert was involved in this. Leon Lilly, state representative. They thought it was unbelievable. They asked me, why do you only want 15 years? I said, I don't know if it'll go, and I don't know if I want to continue on with this. But after 15 years, and I came back and I said, let's go. Let's keep it going. In this room right here, and I don't know if we were still here, I guess not, I get an ovation from, and the people in the gallery thanking me for that. So now we get 15 years done again. And the question out of the council is, we've had this agreement going on, and for some reason, you're saying, oh, well, we fulfilled our obligation. I built this. I paid for it. That concession building out there is used by so many nonprofit organizations, including the fire department there was one of the big ones. They've all profited off of that. And I kept my hands off that, that had nothing to do with me when I did that. But I have to ask you guys, what's changed to, that we're all of a sudden, in this point where, you're gonna ask me, and I guess, I don't know how to better put it. Thanks for the building. Now you can start paying us again. We'll make you pay for the building again. We're gonna start charging, five-year agreement, $125,000. Now let me explain my books that somebody's asking about. In this business, and you heard one of the peoples here, and I, first of all, I want to thank everybody who came here today and support. If we had longer noticed, there'd be a heck of a lot more here. But when it comes to what happens at the cages there, we're a five-month business. I have to make that kind of money to get through the whole year and hope that we do. Every year, it's like, boy, I hope I can make it through this with the bills that we have to pay. Whatever I have left in this year, for example, I've given $4,500 in charities. By the end of the year, it'll be over $10,000 because when the holidays come, things tend to ramp up. I have never, in my 30 years, turned down one organization, church, school, anything that has asked for something. I've always done it. I just wrote a check for $500 for a cancer 13-year-old girl. I sent $400 worth of clothing to another one, you know, some of my shirts and sweatshirts and jackets. Food shelf this week, I went in and what did they say to me? Hey, Triple Crown's here. What do you got? I said, well, here it is. And he goes, we just went over 18,000 pounds. I guess it means nothing. It doesn't mean anything. There's people hungry out there that need this. So with the prices I charge, there isn't a lot left over there. And when we had, we met here two council meetings ago, and I believe Lisa Wong made a comment, I think we need to look at where we could extend this, maybe a year, you said or two was one of the things. I get a call and it's, we're gonna have a meeting. And the meeting is, and I gotta tell you, Mayor, in all due respect, and Brian, you were there. I was flabbergasted. You backed me into a corner like, what are we doing here? And then we negotiated, and the more I think about it, I'm thinking, can I make this happen? At that price, I don't know. If I give a year to look at that and I give you back an empty building, I guess you can do something with it. It's got slanted floors going down. And the thing is sad, and what's been a passion to me all my life, is these kids and these families that have gained through this. I worked as an executive in transportation for years. That's what I did for a living. This thing was done on the side. When I retired is when I started to get more involved. Now, I have a passion for it. I love being down there. I love the kids and the parents because it's, it's what we should be like in America. Yes, sir, no, sir, thank you. They're the most politest kids, and I see them go on to get scholarships. I've had people come back to me that are dentists, lawyers. One's a nuclear physicist with NASA right now. She worked for me. I'm like, those kind of things just warm my heart to see that. And kids that can't afford to go to these training centers, I mean, they're charging $300 an hour. You want to come in here, give us 300, or you want to join a league, 3,000. It's tough. We're the one place that keeps it down. And there isn't a week goes by or a day that people don't thank me for being there. And it isn't there for the money, guys, trust me. My hours right now, we're in the summer, three months, noon to 8 during the week. Rest of the year, we're open 3 to 8, five hours a day. That is a lot of hours. In the fall, I close Sundays during professional football season because there just isn't the business, you know? So this isn't a cash cow by any means. It never has been. And I'm just trying to do the right thing. I don't know of anybody in this city, has anybody donated a building to the city and said it's yours? I know we had an agreement that I would run out of this, but the one thing I promised the day we signed that, it'll never cost a taxpayer as one penny or this city. And that has been held true 100%. Nothing. I footed every bill and everything I've had to do there and a lot more, like the sound system on the baseball field. I don't even like to talk about it because I do a lot of it anonymously, but if you must know, these are the things I do. I give away a lot of stuff, and that's what life should be like. You gotta be a giver. And if I'm in a position to do that with that business, that's what I do. And that's what I want to do. So I ask you as a council to please think about this, what you're doing. If you insist for this, whatever reason that it has to be rent, it's like, I don't know how to better say this. If I had my kids move in with me because they didn't have anywhere to go and they had a family, and then down the road, they said, you know what, I'm gonna sign you over my house. It's yours because someday, we're not gonna be here. A year later, they said, Dad, Mom, you're gonna pay rent. Kind of the same thing, you know, I think. So, you know, I leave it up to you. I just don't see what's different. When we started, I could have probably asked for a 50-year lease and they would have given it to me. They were that happy about it. And they questioned why I only did 15. And I said, I don't know if I want to be invested this long. Well, now it's become a, it's become a passion. And to think that I would have to turn away these kids and these families, that hurts. That really does. If you think we need to move on with the rental thing, then we need to work together on this and get this into something that I can make work so we can continue this business. I don't think you want me to go out of business, does anybody? Or do you want an empty building? I mean, you know, I wouldn't think so. I'm asking you then, let's work together if we do have to do a contract or something. But I gotta have something better. That's $25,000 a year. I don't think I can make it go with that. It's tough, you know? So from there, I don't know where you want to go with this. If we have to meet again, or you want to talk about it right now? I mean, you just...
I know we discussed...
What I'd like to see you say is, you know what, let's go another 15 years. But you're probably not gonna. So I'm worried you think that we have to answer to the city people or whatever, but again, I said, they've never paid a dime, taxpayers or the city. I stuck everything I had in this. My son's here. He knows what we went through. Hell, he was down there many, many times. And he can tell you how many times I was there until 2:00 in the morning because I do all my own maintenance. So can't afford to bring anybody in to do that. Said that, nobody else knows it better than I do, so. I'm just passionate. So I apologize if I come across, you know, but I'm passionate about this whole thing. It's 30 years of my life. And that's, you know, what we gotta, whether that means anything or not, it does to me. I know that. What it means more to me is the kids and the families that wouldn't have an opportunity to do this because I don't know where they go. And I've seen them come through, the Louis and Gus violence, I grew up in my cages, Tommy and Robbie Quinlan, 15 years in the majors. Jeff DeSchmidt on the Monta Mita, you know, go for a captain, went on to play pro ball... Um, Jeff DeSchmidt on the Monta Mita, you know, go for a captain, went on to play pro ball, uh, he mentioned Jimmy Ogden of the Minnesota Twins, you know, these are all people that came in my cages, and grew up there, and I know them personally, so. I don't know, where do you want to go?
On the legal side, when it comes to the.
Yep, so the lease runs till the end of the month, so if we're looking to renegotiate it, I would recommend that there be a motion to extend the current lease for a month, or two months, whatever we think it'll take to get a, a deal done, and we can bring back the new and revised agreement. So if there's a motion to continue the new lease, we'll just draft, draft up a simple little continuation of the current terms, or certainly the, the proposed leases in front of you too. It's really up to you guys, how you want to do it.
Any more questions after that?
I know the big.
Go ahead. I guess I have one. A, a, and I want to work with you, because I, I believe you have a great product, for, for me, one of the hardest parts is setting the precedence of, you know, giving a free rent to a for-profit business. Can, can I ask why you've never done, gone to a not, not-for-profit or nonprofit?
We discussed that the day we were talking.
Yeah, you know, I've never, I've never, it's never crossed my mind that I'm a nonprofit, I give, I give things, you know, I make money to give things. So I don't know if that would qualify, you know, and I've never been one to, I don't know what you'd call, look for a way out, to, you know, I, that isn't what I do, so, you know? And if I was nonprofit, would that change things? I don't know.
Well, that's where the books are open, and yet, as far as us being able to lease to, you know, having a public facility that has no rent, that's what came up before, was that it's a public asset.
I mean, for thirty years, we did this, and that's what.
Well, the first contract was fifteen, so a negotiation was, the building is in lieu of rent.
Right.
So that's, yep, that's where that went through, and that was fulfilled, then it, then it doubled from there, and there was no in-between. So the, the agreement was, that's where they were talking about, what we, what we discussed originally was the building for fifteen years of use in it.
Don't forget, we threw in the concession building too, and that wasn't cheap.
Well, yeah, alls I know is what the contracts were signed, and that's all we can go off of, and that's all at the, when they do the audit, and they look at things, you know, where are the leases, where are things at, how are we as a community, are we, are we distinguishing between certain groups that don't get certain things? So that's where it's, it's, it makes it for.
At the time I did it, you know, there was a little more than I had taken out as a loan, and I said, concession building, you need one. They built it, they were building that complex at the time, and you know how it sits, if you, what are you gonna have in the middle, you gotta have something. They were looking for funds to do it at the time, they got their funds, so.
You were gonna mention something, did you, or not?
Well, I just think, when you, typically, we wouldn't have someone open up their books, because in some.
Exactly, it's private.
It's private, and furthermore, you know, you've got a, an asset, and there's a value to it. It doesn't matter whether he's making a little money, or if it's coming in hand over fist, the, the, it's worth what it's worth, and that's, that was the negotiations.
Yeah, and.
So a for-profit, not-for-profit, I'm not sure that that ultimately would, would matter, save the day on this.
It's just us being stewards of the resources we have, right?
That's right.
Yeah, if I was hand over fist of money, trust me, I guess I wouldn't be sitting down here doing this, other than, I love, you know, that's a passion for me. And years ago, I could have been living on a lake, but this thing's gotten in my blood, and I own it, I mean, it's right here. I was asked a question, what happens if it closes? I couldn't answer that question. So, where do we go? What do you want to do? I mean, if, if we're gonna rent, work with me on this, so we can get something feasible.
Yeah, and that's, we started at five, we worked down to three and a half, so that's why I was.
Five is, you know, kind of a, what you say, whatever that is, that is not even a bonus.
I just called around, but to figure out stuff.
Three and a half, I gotta be honest with, especially with what we got here, you got the building. I hate to say this morbidly, but couldn't you wait until I died? You could do whatever you want, you could wait until I'm dead, and it's yours.
We weren't trying to do anything personal against you, believe me, it's.
But I, I thought about that, can't wait until I'm dead.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's, when they come up, we're taking matters that pop up, and we're trying to go through and see what's best for the city, and like I said, that's absolutely nothing personal.
Yeah, well.
My kids were fourteen years, I coached North St. Paul baseball, and my kids were up there, it's nothing to do with you personally.
With my time in coaching there.
Yeah, exactly, so. It's balls and strikes when it comes to being on the city council, I've learned that.
I don't know, not collecting rent, or collecting less rent, or what, I don't know how that hurts anything, you know, I can.
If we could.
I have a proposal, but I don't know if you want to even hear it now.
Oh, yeah.
Can I do that?
Sure.
What I would think would be feasible, and this is what I'd throw in, and you're, right away, you're gonna go, oh, that isn't, but I'd be willing to try, and, and I got to say try, but two dollars a square foot, that puts fourteen thousand four hundred dollars to the city that I come up with for the year, okay? Um, and that's about seventy-two thousand dollars in five years, I mean, that helps. You're, you're getting rent out of that, and that's kind of where I'd like to be at if, if we need to do this.
We need to, as far as the assets have something, it's for us to be, to keep in.
Well, keep that in mind, the two dollars, I'd like to do that, I mean, the other thing I thought of was, you know, a full-service gross lease.
A what, I'm sorry?
A full-service gross lease.
What's that? Just off the gross?
Nobody knows. That would be pretty much what we agreed on this contract, but it would also include you pay the utilities. That's sort of a full gross lease, I dealt in this stuff, because I built buildings and stuff with my old job, so. And sometimes we did all that.
Mm-hmm.
You know? So, that's the other thing.
If I may ask, um, I'm, the contract is looking at five years, are you planning on having succession planning with this business at all? Succession planning, so somebody coming after you to take over?
Not putting any pressure.
No pressure.
My son's a little too far away, and he knows what, what commitment it is, and it's tough, if I did it, it would be somebody locally. I'd want to find somebody locally to do that. But, you know, they have to come in and re, you know, to make it really big for them, you know, raise prices through the roof or something, you know? Because these other places sure do, that's how they pay. Understand, when COVID, when COVID ended, the last five ones of True Bandicages, they all shut the doors, all that same week, when they lifted the COVID. And a couple of them, I thought would never go away, oh, they did. They just, and I talked to a few of the owners, they said, can't make it. And that's, and I've seen many of them, Oakdale, Stillwater, Woodbury, they opened them up, and within six months, they're gone, because they don't realize, they may come in and look at mine and go, oh, God, look at this, in February, which we're busy. Man, we'll make a killing all year, uh, guess what, August comes, and it's like, wah, right down. And they don't realize that, and I had one of them even open in August, and I'm thinking, you're done, buddy. He got two, two months free rent, the next month, he pulled out overnight, and he had sold yearly memberships, these people all lost them. And he was the next minor league player, I guess, I don't know, I didn't know the guy, but he was desperate, he even copied my cost sheets, took my name off and put his company on, used the same exact ones I had. I'm like, what does that look familiar, right off my printers? So it's, it's a tough thing, you know?
So the, the two, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if I may entertain the idea of extending the lease for a month or two for further negotiation, I would, I would do, I would make that motion. But I think you had something to say, so.
Yeah, so the two that you mentioned was two percent, and or with utilities and everything else?
Two dollars.
Two dollars, I'm sorry, two, yeah, two, two dollars a square foot, sorry, and then the other one would be the three and a half with the utilities, is what you're, the gross.
I'd rather do the two dollars with the gross lease. But I'll be realistic, you know, with the two dollars, that I, I can make work. You know, because we, I think we all have the same goal, we don't want this going.
No.
There's too much for.
We don't want to, and us, us on the council being stewards of the, what we have, we just have to, you know, do something, I thought we were in agreement, if we, I agree with Councilmember Wong, we can do another, discuss the, the items that you brought up, as far as that, we, we just.
I, I, to me, I'd just soon get on with it, if we do it before the end of a month or something, let's get it done, you know, and it's, it's up to you guys.
What is, anybody else's thoughts?
Do you want to wait? We can wait a month too.
I personally would like to wait and discuss the cost and the price of it, and extend the lease, at least till August.
When is your slow time again?
Slow time of the year, August right through the end of January. That's about.
I, I see where you're going with this one.
Yeah. I'd say. Don't want to pull the rug out either, yeah.
That's like six months, so February, and even today, like, you're in there today. I mean, we're there five hours, a hundred bucks, and part of that is, the weather's too nice, they're gonna be outside. If it rains, they all come in, but you've seen what we've had this year, no rain.
Yeah.
So it really does, when it rains, it's like, wow, they come pouring in, but when you have days like this, it's, you know, they're outside, you know?
So I, I guess I'm ready to propose a motion. And my motion would be that I would propose a motion that we extend the existing lease sixty days with Triple Crown. Um, and during that sixty-day period of time, it's my expectation that staff and, and Mr. Bartholomew, and or anyone else who's with you, come to an agreed-upon dollar amount that is like-minded for both city and for business. Um, but it is not my expectation that we extend the lease indefinitely with zero revenue. Is that too much?
Cole, when you say sixty days, could we make it like a, a firm date, like August thirty-first?
Perfect.
August first.
Thirty-first.
Okay, during that time that I will be meeting with somebody, we'll, we'll get to, probably you and Mayor.
No, I, I don't know if I am supposed to be involved in that.
Oh, it's just, it's a staff function.
Good, thank you.
Then, Soren, I had a question, we talked about that.
The maintenance.
Yeah, the maintenance thing, was that getting corrected?
It did.
It did?
Yep.
Okay, because I haven't got to know him, that's fine.
And that was corrected.
Because it was, when I read it, and I said, five years from now, the new council or whoever's gonna say, no, you're responsible, it says right here, you're responsible for everything. And it does, but they were saying, oh, no, that doesn't mean that, it means we'll take care of it, and I'm like, no, that's, so it's, so we clarified.
Yeah, exactly, we want everything clear.
We can send you the new, I, if you don't have the new version, we can get that to you.
Yeah, well, you're gonna do a new version, once we negotiate anyways.
Correct, yeah, we had that ready for this one, in case it was going forward.
So August first, and then is somebody gonna?
August thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Somebody gonna contact me, so we can get together and have anything we want.
So, yeah.
We have a motion, we haven't.
Yep, motion by, to extend the lease to August thirty-first.
Second.
Cole, second, by Councilmember Wong, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thanks, partner.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, thank you for your passion.
Thank you all.
It has been a passion, and that's why I'm kind of having them above us.
Yeah, that's good.
I gotta be able to make things work so that I can continue to do the things I do for, for the community and for the people. North St. Paul, I've been there all my life.
If you're home too much, the wife might get mad at you.
She, she, like I said, my address could be, she understands, she, she acted a hundred percent when we first started, and she's always been. And she knows what it means.
Thank you.
My son grew up there, and he became one hell of a baseball player.
Well, good, well, thank you.
Other ones who went on to be, as pro players, the Virens boys are, just shocked me, I'd seen them little guys coming in, and
Yeah.
They're both in the majors now, it's amazing. They're still the nicest young people you'd ever want to meet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself, thanks, everybody. All right.
Next item up is the hazardous building located at twenty-seven eighteen Sixteenth Avenue, and we have Fire Chief Malinger here.
That is the biggest attraction in the city of North St. Paul.
It is.
I get called from people all over the Twin Cities area, asking about that.
Are we sure we want to do something about it then? It's a landmark.
Yeah, we might.
It's a landmark now.
Meeting Tower.
The wicked witch underneath there?
There we go.
Hey there, how are you? Welcome.
Hi, Mayor, hi, council.
Nice to see you.
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Uh, just bringing before you the resolution, worked with Soren's office on the demolition for twenty-seven eighteen Sixteenth Avenue, as you're all aware of the situation up there. Uh, would you like me to go into any details of where we're at, on the structure, how it happened, or?
I think that would be helpful for, for context.
So, uh, Sunday of Memorial Weekend, May twenty-eighth, the fire department was called uh, at five AM in the morning from a neighbor that heard the house basically collapse. The house was under construction, it basically had been lifted up and set on cribbing uh, by the property owners. So in this case, the property owners, from my understanding, are working as the contractors as well. Uh, permits were in place for the construction, and they basically had removed the old foundation and a portion of the, uh, structure as well, and they were going to rebuild, if you will. Uh, so they had it up on the stilts, they had dug out, they had framing in place for their foundation to be poured, and then actually on the Friday before that weekend, inspectors, our inspectors uh, from Inspect were out to approve the footings and look at those, and then the collapse happened. So a little bit about the owners on this side of things, they currently purchased the house in March to remodel it and then move their family into it. So obviously, uh, the, you know, we get called, we responded, really the only hazard, I shouldn't say only hazard, but obviously a house, there was nobody in it, thankfully, it's not habitable, they weren't living in it at that time. Five in the morning, nobody else was around, uh, we just had utilities to be concerned about, the gas lines and the electric lines that were discontinued that morning. Uh, contacted the property owners right away, along with our building official, to let them know. The property owners did meet us out on site, and we went in, in great detail over with them, along with our uh, police department sergeant and myself, just kind of looking over the site, and trying to make our best determination of what had happened, but obviously, we are not structural engineers. But asked our property owners to uh, turn it over to their insurance for further investigation, and really for him to follow up on that. They were, at that point, because of the damage that they saw, talking of demolishing the, the property. So, really, at this point, I have been working in the aspect of having conversations with the property owners and checking in with them. And the first week, it was really more or less a waiting game for their insurance to come out and do uh, an inspection of the site, and the second week, waiting for them to respond back, which we really didn't receive, or the property owners didn't receive any notification. Uh, myself and the, our building official, Scott Qualley from Inspect, we drafted up a letter and sent it out to the property owners, because one, we were concerned about the safety of other people getting onto the property, so we requested the fence be installed, a six-foot uh, safety fence around the perimeter, and additionally, uh, you know, off of city code and fire code, that uh, one, we removed the hazard from the site, so whether that be a repair. one, we remove the hazard from the site, so whether that be a repair or demolishing, that it be done immediately. They forwarded on to their insurance and with no date given by them or decision made. I also asked for their claims adjuster, so that I could reach out directly to him and see if, where they were moving on it. And really, the claims adjuster just advised me that this is a private matter and I would have to deal with the property owners regarding, and that they were investigating it. So in the city's best interests, we felt, since this is kind of where we're at with a timeline of, of things, even though I do believe it is the owner's intent to eventually tear this down, we're kind of in a waiting game. And my concern is how long that waiting game would really be. And knowing, one, tonight's council meeting, the next one we're going to have is a month from now because of July fourth. So that puts us thirty days behind, and really, this whole process. Maybe if Soren, you want to walk through the process, it is a, an extended timeline, if you will.
It is, so we are, we are asking the council to adopt the resolution declaring that the home is hazardous. And what that allows us to do is start the process, they still have time to respond, they'll have thirty days to correct it. Administratively, Jason can give them more time if we feel that, you know, progress is being made in that regards. But after that thirty days, we then file it with the court, we have to get a court hearing, we have to actually have that hearing and have the judge grant our request for relief. Because it is a severe form of relief, we're asking to go on to someone's property and tear their home down, and then bill them for it. So that is the nature of the request, that can, once filed, take up to ninety to a hundred and twenty days. What I would say is, which is pretty quick in the court system. We have, with some backlogs and just recovering from COVID, seeing those hearings take a little bit longer. So doing it now at least affords us the opportunity to get the system started. We, we aren't obligated to follow through on it if they, if we gain voluntary compliance, which is what we want. But I do think it's necessary to, to get it going anyway.
I agree a hundred percent, so that's just where we're at, looking for, oops, excuse me. I definitely want voluntary compliance, I'm trying to stay in contact with them, and I really feel that's what they want. But as difficult as it is for the neighbors in that area, having to deal with the cars coming down the road and having that there, I, I understand that. But we, we have to go through the proper steps to, one, protect ourselves and to potentially take this down if needed, and it, it's going to be some time. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Are the property owners aware of this resolution?
I'm not su, we, I don't, I know we're not obligated to notify them of this resolution, I hadn't talked about them. We basically got this together last Friday and unfortunately haven't had the opportunity to speak to them yet, but I would be talking to them directly.
They will be personally served with this?
Is it thirty days from the day they're served, or thirty days from today?
So once it's signed. Sorry.
We've, we've traditionally given them thirty days from notice, which is when they're served.
Were they able to get that fence up?
Yes, so my instructions were a six foot chain link safety fence around the entire perimeter. They did use the part of the fence that is, was already in place, a wood fence, six foot fence on the Dairy Queen side. And because of some grating and sloping issues, it doesn't go all the way to the ground. So they put up the chain link fence across the front and the, down the side, but not all the way to the back. So I've asked them to just kind of finalize. I mean, from the front, it looks like it's around the entire perimeter, but it's not. But they did put the fence up after, at, at our request.
Any questions?
So the motion before you is to approve the resolution ordering repair or removal of the hazardous conditions.
Do you want to propose that motion? Put that motion forward?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
We have one more we added on to the bottom?
Yes, item D, which was E in the consent agenda, is resolution approving a PUD amendment for the Lily redevelopment project.
Thanks for hanging around, Jim.
Your last.
I read the contract and everything looks exactly as requested. For the agreement, not the contract, sorry.
I was the one that polled this, give me, I just had one quick question, I just got to find it now, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
On page. There we go. The developer may also submit revised development plans for city review, requesting to substitute residential units for that portion of the project. Does that leave them designated as work-live unit? So if, if a commercial place wanted to go in there later, there would be no need to come before the city council to have it be a work unit?
The, the two uses in the building as now proposed are residential and live-work, so there is two uses in the building. Unless we come to a point where he literally cannot fill any of those first floor live-work units, then they could potentially become residential uses. At no point would the city say you cannot have residential, commercial, because it's in a commercial district.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if it did happen to get resi, rented as residential later down the road, it could still be rented as a, a work unit without any action by us as a city council?
Correct.
With that answer, then I now move to accept the item I polled.
Second?
I'm just, I'm holding one second, can I ask a, ask a question to Jim while we're here? That question, come on up, Jim, if you don't mind. Just the question that John brought up with handicap accessible for those front units that are live-work, is there, is there?
There will be an accessible route to those dwelling units, there's parking on the north side. And then there's a corridor that's on the back of those dwelling units, that'll all have ramps and access to the back of those units.
So they are ADA compliant?
So they are ADA compliant.
Okay, right, that was the question that John had.
He's right, he's very astute looking at the plans, but the sidewalk does the grade changes for the sidewalk.
Okay.
So in that, so on, on the east side, those, very east unit, the sidewalk is flat into the unit, and as you go towards the west, sidewalk falls, so we had to create a few steps. And I, I think it's probably on the most westerly side, I think it's four steps, three or four steps at that, so.
But they do have.
And then we actually set down the main lobby side even further, the, the floor is up, is shifted down because the grade keeps going down in our main amenity area where the, front of the house is.
Okay.
So, but they're, they're, they're all accessible.
Thank you. How about the parking questions, that, did we lose handicap for parking that he had for that? Are we, are we up to code with ADA?
Yes, we are up to code, and what happened is we lost.
Two, you lost two regular spots to comply with the ADA requirement, so that was a condition of the original.
I just want to make sure we got John here, so the question's answered, so we got rid of regu, two regular?
Elaine.
Well, that's fine, you're, you're here for her. So we got the two parking spots that we got rid of, the regular to match the ADA, and we have handicap accessible for the, perfect. All right, then we might as well get it done while we're here, right?
Sounds great.
Thanks, thanks, appreciated, Jim. All right, now we'll do the.
I think you'll have a nice story on, it's Fox nine that the cameras.
Oh, Fox nine. Well, I hope they got my good side, not, not all the chins. Carol Evan too, huh? Can you doctor that film while you're there? Yeah, I appreciate it.
Glamour shots.
That's right. So now we move forward to that?
Nope, you got a vote.
Oh, you know, that's what I'm saying, move for the vote.
Yep.
All right. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor?
So moved, Councilmembers, where?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you much.
You're welcome, thank you.
You had nothing else going on tonight?
Go, go hit a few balls at the batting cages as you leave, yeah. All right, reports, thanks.
Thank you, next item up is reports from City Manager and Departments. So as you know, the Fire Department's been working on the code compliance on our tippy house. Public Works is updated on the downtown project, that's going very well. They're getting close to finishing up with the storm sewer, and they're moving on for the subgrade for the road to build that up and then move forward. So it's been moving along well because they haven't had any delays due to the weather with the, with dry weather that we've been having. And they're still working with the insurance company on hail damage that we have seen. We are, I think, three hundred and some dollars into our fifty thousand dollar amount that we have to pay before the insurance kicks in, so, and I think that bill is going to be well over fifty thousand dollars. So more to come on that as they start planning the roof replacements on buildings that have shingled roofs. Electric Department's been working still up at Silver Lake, trying to get those new lights in, been moving along with that, moving along with the Lily Billy building project. We had a bore contractor in here two weeks ago, they were here for about a week, got all the piping in and now they're working on the wire and getting equipment in place. Actually still waiting on some of the material that, everything's so backlog still. Park and outdoor space survey, the city of North St. Paul encourages all residents to participate in our park and open space survey. You can find the link online at northstpaul.org/parksurvey, or pick up a paper copy at City Hall. The Community Development Department and Park and Recreation Commissions are seeking residents' input as they work on future park plans. You can register your block party for the National Night Out coming up in August. The city again will host National Night Out activities on Tuesday, August first. The registration form for the neighborhood block parties is now open, it can be found at northstpaul.org. In addition to the neighborhood gatherings, the city will also host an open house on Tuesday, August first, from five to seven in the Fire Apparatus Bay. And then we'll have a ribbon cutting coming up for North St. Paul Business Association, along with the city to, will host ribbon cutting to officially welcome, officially welcome Hangtime Board Shop and Sweet Candy Store on Thursday, July sixth at five thirty PM. Please come out and see us, and that's all I have.
Good, looking forward to those, both those, I was able to see them at the car show. Okay, next, reports from Council Commission Committees, any Councilmember Norby?
The Planning Commission, next meeting is coming up on July sixth.
All right.
I was unable, able to attend the Arts and Culture Meeting, but they had discussed the budget and they're going to continue doing that in the next meeting, and then they had some updates around their projects. My understanding is the utility box wraps have been ordered. And then the next meeting is July fifth, at six thirty here in the chambers.
Councilmember Schwerer?
Parks and Recreation Meeting is next Wednesday in Council Chambers. And I want to commend everyone with the city, and the Touch Truck Night, went to the car show that evening, and it was lovely. We had great representation of both the Police Department, the Fire Department, and all of Public Works, as well as Brandy was there and Carrie was there handing out our energy savings bags. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
There was not an EDA meeting in the month of June, is there one in July? If there is, it's July eleventh at three o'clock here in Chambers. If we, you were having it? Okay.
Sounds good. General Business, Councilmember Norby?
Just would like to wish everyone a happy Pride Month, and since there is no meeting on the Fourth of July, wish everyone a wonderful Independence Day.
Councilmember Wong?
Cole again.
Twice in a night.
You need to have a test to be a driver, maybe you should need a test to be a mayor. Wherever you are, just talk.
Oh, my gosh. I have nothing.
You put me through all that.
No, I, I do have some.
That was good.
So I got an email from a resident, and I had talked to Brian about this, and it also went to Chief Babe and Roth as well. And her thought was, how, how does a community look at an ordinance around gun locks? So that was something that she had talked about, I think her job is at a healthcare clinic, and that's something they look at is death by firearms, and so she's very passionate about that. So just something for us to consider, I know the state provides free locks, and I know Chief has picked up some as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Good, nothing.
Nicole?
A couple of business topics, one, do we need a gavel in, gavel out meeting shortly after July fourth to pay bills? Or do you now have the ability to pay bills and not have council approval?
We can do that.
Okay. Perfect, and then National Night Out and our, our August meeting fall on the same date? Are we going to have a council meeting prior to the start of National Night Out, or are we going to move the meeting?
I believe it was going to be canceled, if you have a wish to do one earlier.
Cancel works.
So yes, there will be a gap of a month between the next one and then also the next one July in August.
Okay.
Summer hours, all right. I have a couple items, it was a great car show turnout last week, was just absolutely beautiful weather, and there were so many people there, they were all over. I was able to see our great law enforcement in action, there was a man with dementia that actually got away and got up to the car show and our, didn't have a license anymore, our police officers worked with him, kept him calm, called his significant other to come pick him up, and it's just how gentle they were and how they treated him and respected him was really, really good to see. And I was very impressed by, by how that went, because it wasn't any in trouble, it was, we just want to make sure you're safe, got ahold of somebody that could help him, so I really, really commend the officer for that. I tried to look on the picture, because I couldn't remember his name, but they're all clean shaven there, and he had a stubble, so I don't know who it is. But whoever it was, I appreciate what he did, so the picture didn't help me back there. Also, for the next meeting, we're going to be having a closed door review with our City Manager. We have a brand new City Council, so with the new City Council and, and newer manager and some of the other departments, we're going to have a, a meeting for six months, see how we're doing. We're actually going to be bringing in a facilitator coach to help us to be able to understand with so many new people. So that will be happening on the next meeting, July eighteenth, is it? Something like that, or twentieth, I think it's twentieth. Eighteenth, okay, July eighteenth, we'll be doing that. Anything else I need to say about that? So anything else, if not, I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong? Second, why do people do this to me?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, you.